Good evening, everyone. Mrs. Adriani sends her regret she cannot be here tonight, so I will be filling in for her. Statement of adequate notice by Board President pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-10, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by advertising such notice in the Home News Tribune, the Asbury Park Press, Board Office, the schools, and on Cablevision Channel 118, and Verizon Files Channel 24, and by filing, excuse me, such notice with the township clerk. This meeting was scheduled for Tuesday, February 16, 2016. The Board will take formal action on payment of bills and other items. Mr. Marra, please.
The Olbridge Township Board of Education acknowledges that the law of this state establishes that members of the public, including members of the Board, have the right to record public Board meetings using audio or video recording devices, provided that that act of recording does not interfere with the business of this public Board meeting. Therefore, the Board makes it known that any such recording is to be considered the private recording of the individual, and in no manner represents the official record of this Board. The Board therefore takes no responsibility for such private recording and completely disavows any future use.
Thank you, Mr. Marra. Mr. Weber and Mr. Singh will also not be in attendance tonight. Roll call, please.
Dunn.
Here.
Dinoff.
Present.
Hopman.
Here.
De Prima.
Here.
Ellis Foster.
Here.
Mongan.
Here.
Singh. Weber. Adriani. Quorum exists.
We'll stand for the pledge, please.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I believe Mr. Dinoff again volunteered to read the Code of Ethics.
Yes. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. This is the Code of Ethics Corner Highlight of the Month for February. Carry out his or her responsibility not to administer the schools, but together with fellow Board members, ensure they are well-run. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dinoff. Okay, I need a motion for the approval of minutes, please.
Dinoff will move.
Oh, I apologize for some changes for Mr. Marra.
Yeah, there were two last-minute changes to tonight's agenda. On page three, under Recognition, we're removing item number three. And on page 30, under Board Secretary and Board Business, the first item, undertake a thorough assessment of facilities over the next two years and develop a plan. Five-year is to be scratched off. That's being removed. Thank you, Mr. De Prima.
Thank you, Mr. Marra. Sorry for the oversight. Okay, we need a motion for the approval of minutes, please.
Dinoff will move.
Mr. Dunn. Annette, second. Any discussion? Mr. Marra, roll call.
Dunn.
Yes.
Dinoff.
Yes.
Hopman.
Yes.
De Prima.
Yes.
Ellis Foster.
Yes.
Mongan.
Yes.
Resolutions pass.
Okay, report of student representative, Mr. Cisano. You ready?
Thank you. First off, the boys hockey, basketball, wrestling, and track teams are all having very successful seasons, actually some of the most successful in the school's history. SAD, which is Students Against Destructive Decisions, last Thursday after school spent hours cutting out paper hearts that said, "You are special, and you are amazing," and put them on every single locker in the school for Valentine's Day. Project Unified, formerly known as the Buddy Team, participated in a flag football game with some of our varsity football players, and it was a great experience for both teams to spend time with each other and make some new friends. This Saturday on February 20th will be the annual Polar Plunge that our peer program is involved in. Our goal is to raise at least $10,000, and currently we're actually at $8,600. The money raised is donated to the Special Olympics, and a small percentage of that money is actually given back to our very own Project Unified team. And lastly, also this Saturday after the Polar Plunge, the peer program will be having their midwinter retreat at the high school where we will participate in team-building activities with our classes. Thank you.
As always, thank you for an in-depth report. Thank God it wasn't last weekend for the Polar Plunge. That would've been too good. One of our favorite parts of a meeting is recognition. I'll hand it over to Mr. Sididino.
Thank you. At this time, if I have Dr. Rieger go to the dais, we'll have Move the Board of Education to commend the following students of Grissom Elementary School for their efforts in the Patriot Forward Project. We have Erin Parrett, who collected holiday gifts for local children through the Ring and Run Foundation. Ring and Run was definitely something different when I was your age, Erin. And Lola Garcia, who collected backpacks for students in Guatemala.
There's been talk over the past handful of years in regards to New Jersey State School of Character and National School of Character designations giving out across the state. It is a great honor, and the plaques and banners look beautiful throughout the hallways. But the most wonderful part of the designation is when the students, staff, and administration within each building take the time to pause, look, and feel the maturation process of everyone involved in developing the character within the building. Those who belong to the Grissom family have taken pride in the journey in realizing that in doing benevolent activities for others, it is just that, doing it for others, not for the individual rewards in return. Currently, Grissom is a state school of character, and this year, we hope we will be identified as a national school of character due to the overall maturation of the entire Grissom family. Two prime examples of this journey are third grader Erin Parrett and fifth grader Lola Garcia of Grissom School. Unfortunately, Erin could not be here tonight, but I would like to share her wonderful character with all of you. After having participated along with her family in the Grissom Annual Thanksgiving Food Drive, Erin Parrett knew she wanted to continue to make a difference through the holiday season. Through social media, Erin found the Ring and Run Foundation, whose goal was to provide gifts and Christmas trees to the families in need. Erin obtained a list of names and decided to create her plan to collect all the items on the holiday wish list of two Olbridge students. Erin went to each classroom to explain her plan, her desire to make a difference, and present the wish list to the students of Grissom. Having only collected for two weeks, over 40 gifts were donated. Erin's family, classmates, their families, and staff members came together after school to wrap all of the gifts. The Ring and Run Foundation came to Grissom School and were so enthusiastic to see what Erin had accomplished. Erin hopes this project will become a tradition at Grissom School. As previously mentioned, Lola Garcia is a fifth grader at Grissom, and she is here tonight. Lola, why don't you come on up? (APPLAUSE). Why don't you stand over here? See you better. Stand up right here. Stand up on the stage so you can see you better. Good. In September of 2015, Lola approached me with the idea of holding a Guatemalan backpack drive. Having been born in Guatemala and knowing about the extreme poverty that exists in the country, Lola wanted to help the Guatemalan children. To meet the needs of the children, backpacks were collected and sent for students to be able to carry their schoolbooks and encourage them to do well in school. This backpack drive came to fruition with the help of Judy Baker from the Houses to Homes Organization and Grissom School. Lola exemplifies Grissom's core values and is clearly seen that she is responsible, caring, and above all, a good citizen. Her strength is her kindness, and she has made a global impact and difference in the lives of other children. In the future, Lola would like to continue to educate others about life in Guatemala as well as going there to help build homes and schools. Thank you, Lola, and thank you, Erin.[513.12][513.12](APPLAUSE).
Okay, this evening, we have the extreme honor to speak about three of our Eagle Scouts. And the second one we're going to speak about was, became, Dan Rehorn became ill this evening and couldn't get out of bed, so we're going to move his recognition to March. But we will honor him just the same, and we'll start off with our first recognition and as Dakota DeSantis. If I can have Dakota DeSantis join me at the podium.[566.72][566.72](APPLAUSE). Dakota recently got his Eagle Scout through a project he did right here on campus at the Grade Nine Center. There was a, where the students wait for the buses, an area that had become pretty blight and not very comfortable. He put some bench work in, some shrubbery in, some flowers in to make it look much more presentable to people coming from the outside as well, and for the students who are waiting for the buses there. Really made it great. And I believe you worked with one of our professors there, Mr. Goodman? Is that correct? And, you know, if you know Dakota, he's involved in almost everything at the high school during his senior year. He was a member of their football team, wrestling team, spent time on the lacrosse team, he's in the peer program, Air Force Junior RO2C, recently became certified as a Township EMT and is on Student Senate. As well as that, he's done some acting. If you've seen the Disney video, he played the chef from the Lady and the Tramp section of it. All great stuff. So, he found, during all that time he spends with us in school, he also had time to go out into the community through the Boy Scouts, which has a great job in our programs to make this community better, and we want to thank him for that. And here is your recognition on behalf of the Board of Education. Thank you.[656.12][656.12](APPLAUSE). Okay. At this time, if I can have Devin Erdley come on up.[663.81][663.81](APPLAUSE). Devin, tonight, you can see, is sporting the shorts attire from the Boy Scouts because of the heat wave we're having coming up from five degrees to a balmy 56 today. Devin also, quite a remarkable student here at Olbridge High School. He was a member of football team, lacrosse team, and our peer program, also on honor roll, and was selected to the University of His Choice, Alderson Brutus University in West Virginia. The work that he has done is someplace where he spent a lot of time as a kid with the Raritan Bay Cougars Association. Their bleachers needed some work, and Devin made it his project to make those bleachers safe for the fans coming to see the young people play there. So, we want to thank him again for all the work he's done at Olbridge High School and the work he's done to make his community better through the Boy Scouts. So, thank you very much.[720.04][720.04](APPLAUSE). Go over there, and you get a nice picture. Oh, here's your certificate. Take that with you.[726.04][726.04](APPLAUSE).
Gentlemen.
Oh.
Oh, sorry.
Mrs. Adriani usually has something to say about Eagle Scouts, but I'm not well enough for her, so on her behalf, thank you and congratulations. Oh, so actually, so, Mr. De Prima, if I can, because I was thinking the same thing. I feel a little, I am a little versed, as my son earned his eagle from 219 in 2012. And what Mrs. Adriani would say is that the, that there is less than 5% of all scouts that go on to get their eagle. You have to earn over 45 merit badges. Am I correct on that? We'll say 45. Let's go with that. There is countless of hours actually putting your project together, getting it done. I think it's a true testament to the character of our students. I can tell you, it's not easy when you're in high school to say, "I'm still with the Scouts," whether it's a Boy Scouts or Girl Scouts. So, to keep that commitment certainly goes to your integrity and your character. But however, we also would want to recognize the parents who help through the whole scouting years. So, there's a lot of bringing you back and forth to earn those merit badges, as well as the community here in Olbridge of scout leaders and support. So, I see a lot of them out there. I see Mrs. Brooks back there. So, the people who help the organization in Olbridge. So, I would also say, compared to other districts around here, I'm sure we get a much larger chance to make these kind of recognitions at our Board of Ed, and I know our groups in Olbridge produce a vast amount, I think, well above average, number of Eagle Scouts. So, I commend you all, and congratulations.
Thank you, Mrs. Foster, Ellis Foster. Okay, Move the Board of Education, recognize items one, two, and four of the recognition section. I need a motion, please.
I'll move.
Okay, Nancy and Rich. Roll call, Mr. Marra. Any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Marra.
Dinoff.
Yes.
Hopman.
Yes.
De Prima.
Yes.
Ellis Foster.
Yes.
Mongan.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Resolutions one, two, and four, pass.
Okay. Mr. Sididino, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you very much. It's really nice to finish up that recognition portion from everyone, from the Garcia family to the Erdley family and the Dakotas, Dakotas family I've known for a very long time. And in and around school, their children have always exemplified everything that's wonderful about Olbridge schools, and it comes from programs like the Boy Scouts and like the character education programs, and from terrific families and parents. So, thank, thank you again for all that you've done. I just want to bring the Board and the audience up to speed on our goals for the 2015-16 school year, working with members of the Board of Education. We have a, some goals to, that have to be revisited in a short period of time. So, we've introduced, reintroduced a two-year goal that was started in last year, and we're going to bring it back, obviously, because it's a two-year goal into the 15-16 school year, and adding two more goals. So, I just want to review them for you with the importance and how they will impact Olbridge School District going forward. So, the first is a, we're in year two of this two-year goal, is to undertake a thorough assessment of facilities over the next two years and develop a plan to include timelines for upgrades and repairs and facility organizations and utilization to enhance delivery of education in our, in our school through its, through our services. And we've already begun this process. We did a building use study. We've looked at the long-term use of our buildings and what the shelf life is for them through that study. We went out through an ESIP, which is an Energy Savings Improvement Plan, and we also are in the process, at the last meeting, to assign ESCO, which is an energy service provider?
Energy service company.
Company, energy service company. And so, we're looking at all those in hopes of having the amount of money we save on our energy to improve our, our facilities, and looking beyond that, too. So, that part of the goal, we are on our way into our second year, and I hope that through the cooperation with this Board and the public input we've received, that we can truly meet, reach the merits of that goal. And the second goal is, over the next two years, to expand learning opportunities and/or programs for targeted subgroups to address the unique needs of our diverse school district. And through that, we're looking at the subgroups in our, in our schools and try to improve programs for them, whether it be the students who are gifted and talented, whether it be our special needs population, whether it be some of our other subgroups. We're going to look at enhancing our programs and expanding upon them so they have the opportunity to reach, everyone has the opportunity to reach their potential. And our last one is the, to increase our student engagement in district decision-making by providing opportunities to gather student suggestions and feedback. And my goal in this process is, we, you know, we have had great communication with parents, other stakeholders in the community, whether the community is aware or not, you know, we've gone out through this administration, reached out to Realtors, and spoke to Realtors about what do they know about our schools and how we can better market Olbridge as a community to them. We've gone to senior living areas and communities to speak to them about Olbridge schools, and even though they might not have children currently in the schools, how our, our school district is a viable and great asset to them as they live in Olbridge, and what they can do for us and what we can do with them. And this is the next part of it, I think, is, you know, to give our students the voice. And not just our high school students are here and they, and they're on this campus, and we have a representative, but our middle school students, our elementary school students. So, we have a plan to go out into the schools and into the community, local retail establishments, having a, you know, I maybe, I haven't reached out to them yet on this particular event, but maybe at Friendly's, you know, Sundays with the superintendent, you come down, you give me your thoughts and opinions about how I can make your schools better, and, you know, you get to build a sundae with me, and maybe I'll eat anything you make or something like that. Events at the library where students can come down and, you know, pick out a book and, you know, meet and give some ideas on how their schools can better feed their needs, you know? Everything from what's in the cafeteria to our curriculum and our extracurricular programs, to have that student voice. And what's different about these goals going forward is, you're going to be able to, because I don't want this, the Board of Education to be able to target my progress towards achieving these goals with my team, but you as a community can do that, because we're going to put underneath it data points or objectives, and once those objectives are met, you'll be able to track them, saying, "Okay, so here's, here's the plan. We're going to go out to an ESIP and get the ESIP. Check, we've done that. We're going to assign an ESCO. Check, we've done that." When looking at some of the plans we have for expanding for our subgroups, one of them we've talked about is the supermarkets career program here at Olbridge High School, where our transition students will have the opportunity, younger age, and have greater opportunity to learn life skills and employment skills for beyond transitioning into a career path out of high school. And once we have that up and running, we can say, "Check, we've done that." Bringing back our adult education facility for our, our students who are disaffected to make sure we're providing every student with the opportunity, regardless of their age, to have an Olbridge High School diploma. And once we've achieved that goal, we can check that one off. So, these are the goals, but underneath them on the, on the district website will be a set of indicators, for lack of a better word, and you can track indicators and the progress towards these goals on a monthly basis. So, that's the progress towards the goals, and I submit it to the Board, and hopefully you'll approve these goals for tonight, and we can get started on our, looking at our next goals for April and June of this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sididino. Any questions or discussion for Mr. Sididino? Okay. Mr. Marra, any correspondence? Excuse me.
No.
Okay, special committee reports. I'm pretty sure we have some on this side of the table, so I'm going to start on that side. That's okay. Mrs. Mongan?
No.
Annette, no? Jeff, no? I thought we had some. Rich?
Yes. Good evening. Very busy month for the Board of Education regarding committee meetings, and we had quite a few this past month. One in particular, which is very important to the district, the Committee of the Whole, the Finance, met back on February 1st to construct and to go over the preliminary budget for 2016, 2017. And at this point, as everyone knows, it's a very tedious process. We need to look at all the variables and all the little information we get currently from the state and look at our numbers to determine where we're going to be this coming year for next. At this point, there's nothing written in stone at this point concerning what we're doing. We're waiting for more information to come back from the state, hopefully on the 27th of February. We'll get the numbers from the state, what our state aid will be, and at that point, we'll have some firm figures to determine what we're going to be doing concerning our money situation for 2016, 2017. With that said, the administration did provide some insight on new adoptions and initiatives that they're proposing for next year. Those initiatives and adoptions are very worthwhile. They're going to enhance our services to our children and make our district much better on a delivery aspect and to treat all children equally. So, that's going to be in the budget process as well, but we are working towards it, and hopefully by the end of the month, we'll have a better sense of where we're going to be. But let me remind you, it's, it's not a very easy process. There's a lot of variables that come into play, and the administration always does an excellent job in crunching the numbers and doing what's best for not only the students but the taxpayers of this great town, and we need to remember that. At this point, we'll have more, hopefully, next month for the public. There will be another Committee of the Whole for Finance next month, and that will be, of course, published and made known to the public. So, at this point, we're waiting for the numbers from the governor, and we'll be able to move forward at that point. Sometime in March, we need to have a preliminary budget sent to the county, and then hopefully in April, we'll have it ratified. But right now, stay tuned, and we are working very diligently to be fair and equitable to everyone involved. That's my first committee report. My second committee report has to do with buildings, grounds, and transportation. We did have a meeting on Thursday, February 11th. We discussed a whole litany of items that needed to, to be vetted. We did receive our existing facility evaluations for five schools in the district. Those five schools were Cheesecake Elementary, Leroy Gordon Cooper Elementary, John Glenn Junior Elementary, Virgil Grissom Elementary, and Carl Sandberg Middle School. Our architect of record did an analysis based upon a commissioning of this report by the Board of Education last year, and he went through and vetted all the issues in these, these particular five buildings. And nothing really new came out of this report, except to reaffirm the facts that, you know, we have many buildings that are aging, and buildings are exceeding their life cycle. So, that puts the onus on the Board of Education and the administration to come up with a comprehensive facilities plan to deal with our aging infrastructure. And I'm happy to say, based upon the ESCO program, ESIP program, and also other possibilities, this Board and administration is doing its responsibility and making sure that our facilities are A1 going forward. So, that will be vetted as we go along in the near future, and we will continue building on that process. Also, buildings and grounds and transportation, meaning we did discuss snow removal. I know that there were many people who were concerned with some of the snow removal efforts during our historic storm of January 25th, and we need to remember, it's a historic storm. It was one of the greatest, most significant snow events in our history, and overall, the district did fabulously with its snow removal efforts. But since, you know, we did get us a few concerns and a few complaints, we did investigate, and we were able to tweak some of the operations to refine it and make it better, and the administration was open to it. Frank Fazita also was open to it, and I think it'll make us a better district going forward. So, we did deal with that concern as well. There's much more. I don't want to get into all the minutia, but we are working diligently. We know what the problems are in the district, and we will be moving forward. As for the ESCO interviews, I will leave that for later in the agenda, on the, later in the agenda during the business meeting, and we'll discuss that before we vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Anything for Mr. Dunn on the Board? Excuse me. I also had a committee meeting, athletics, food service, and medical services. If you haven't been to one of those meetings, if you have a child in school, if you have a child that plays sports, if you have a child that gets sick, or if you have a child that eats, I recommend you come to these meetings. They're very informative. We have, the key people from our district are always there and ready to answer questions and address your concerns. Mr. Erickson announced that we will be hosting a track GMCs on May 12th and 13th. Track and wrestling teams are having great seasons. We spoke about some needs for some of the gym equipment in the fieldhouse up by Lombardi Field, and we, we checked, we wanted to check on the process for accepting donations from outside places such as local gyms that might be getting rid of some of their stuff, excuse me. As long as it's deemed safe and worthy, then we would be glad to accept it. Ms. Feliciano told us there will be some state mandated, there will be a state mandated administrative review in March and audit on food safety. She also announced the Future Chef's Competition is coming up in March, March 19th. It's, it's a really nice day where the children from elementary school submit healthy recipes, and they cook up their recipes or prepare their recipes, and I, yours truly will be one of the judges. It's a nice event. If you want to come out, I think it's 11 o'clock Saturday morning on March 19th. It'll be posted, though. There was a discussion about food allergies. We need, we have to have better scrutiny, no eating on school buses, segregation in the schools, and it's something that's been ongoing and will continue to be ongoing until it's, I don't know if it'll ever be perfected, but it's a major concern of the Board, and we are working on it. And Nurse Baker gave an in-depth update and PowerPoint presentation on new legislation, lice, and other topics. As I said, these, these meetings are very informative, so the next, watch the postings, and I urge you to come out next time. Thank you. Facilities use, nothing there. Hearing of residents, agenda items only? Anybody? Okay. Let's see, curriculum, one through 10. Need somebody to move curriculum, one through 10? Items one through 10, please?
Dunn will move curriculum. Dunn, Dunn will second curriculum.
Any discussion? Mr. Marra?
Hopman.
Yes.
De Prima.
Yes.
Ellis Foster.
Yes.
Mongan.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Dinoff.
Yes.
Resolutions one through 10, pass.
Okay. Some, need a motion to move athletics, items one, just number one. But it's, it's a big number one.
I'll move it.
Ms. Foster?
I'll move second.
Annette, any discussion? Mr. Marra?
Hopman.
Yes.
De Prima.
Yes.
Ellis Foster.
Yes.
Resolutions one through 10, pass.
Okay, some, need a motion to, uh, move athletics, items one, just number one. But it's, it's a big number one.
I'll move it.
Ms. Foster?
I'll move second.
Annette, any discussion? Mr. Mara?
Hartman?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mongon?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Dineoff?
Yes.
Resolution one passes.
Okay, Finance, items one through eight.
Mongon will move.
Ms. Mongon, second, please.
Dunn will second, Finance.
Mr. Mara? I'm sorry, any discussion?
Yes, I just have a quick question.
Sure.
Um, I guess for Mr. Mara. Um, I just wanted to know, when approximately would we have the bond ratings by? When would we have that information? Cause I know that's an important step, and that it'll depend on our future on funding of special projects. Do you have just a timeframe of when?
The entire process, uh, should be completed by the end of April.
The end of April, okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Mr. Mara?
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mongon?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Dineoff?
Yes.
Hartman?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Resolutions one through eight, pass.
Okay, non-certificated personnel office, items one through five. Need a motion, please?
Dineoff, Dineoff will second.
Annette and Jeff, any discussions? Questions? I'd like to add one comment. I don't really have the pleasure of speaking or working with any of these ladies, except Ms. Tori, and I just wanna say, thank you for everything you do. You've, uh, tremendous help to all of us. Thank you. Mr. Mara?
Mongon?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Dineoff?
Yes.
Hartman?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Resolutions one through five, pass.
Non-certificated personnel operational, item one, motion, please?
Dunn will make a motion, non-certificated personnel operational, item one.
Rich, in a second.
Hartman will second.
Thank you, any discussion? Mr. Mara?
Dunn?
Yes.
Dineoff?
Yes.
Hartman?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mongon?
Yes.
Resolution one passes.
Okay, non-certificated personnel other, items one through nine. Someone make a motion, please?
Hartman will make a motion, non-certificated personnel other, one through nine.
Annette, in a second.
Dunn will second Ms. Hartman's motion.
And any discussion?
Yes, just a quick point. Um, on number seven, I was looking, um, can you provide a brief explanation of why, um, this individual is being hired for SOC, and then with the SOC account, and then is automatically being reassigned to Madison Park? I just wanted to understand the reasoning behind that. Number seven, that is, and then I believe, um, letter E under number eight. There was a, uh, paraprofessional who became a teacher in another district that left an open position, um, due to staffing concerns at Madison Park, who were on the programs. We were able to rotate staff, um, for the betterment of the program and for the staff
That suffice, Mr. Dineoff?
I'm sorry?
You good?
Yes.
Okay?
Yes.
Okay, Annette, uh, motion, and Rich second, Mr. Mara?
Dunn?
Yes.
Dineoff?
Yes.
Hartman?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mongon?
Yes.
Resolutions one through nine, pass.
You know, I don't purposely speed through this stuff. It just seems whenever I'm sitting here, it's, it's an easy, uh, agenda. Uh, next, certified personnel, one through, well, one through 24, bite my tongue.
Dineoff will move.
I'm sorry, who? Dineoff, Jeff, and a second, please?
Mongon will second.
Nancy. Any discussion?
Mr. Vice President, I will need to separate item 12 for voting purposes.
Okay, Mr. Dunn, item 12 is separated for voting purposes. Anybody else?
Now, uh, would I, I'd just like to recognize number one, and we have two retirees of a great number of years. So it looks like a, a big loss for Voorhees, but, um, you know, two people who dedicated a great deal of time for the district, so congratulations on your retirement.
Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Mara, roll call on items one through 11. Well, I, okay, one through 11 and 13 to 24, I apologize.
Dunn?
Yes.
Dineoff?
Yes.
Hartman?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mongon?
Yes.
Resolutions one through 11 and 13 through 24, pass.
Okay, and a roll call on number 12.
Dunn?
No vote.
Dineoff?
Yes.
Hartman?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mongon?
Yes.
Resolution 12 passes.
Thank you. Non-certificated personnel, transportation, item one, roll, um, motion, please?
Mongon will move.
Ms. Mongon, and second?
Dunn will second.
Thank you. Any discussion? No discussion, Mr. Mara, please?
Dunn?
Yes.
Dineoff?
Yes.
Hartman?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mongon?
Yes.
Resolution one passes.
Okay, item 25, Supplies, Equipment, and Services, numbers one through, one through three.
Dunn will make a motion, Supplies, Equipment, and Services, one through three.
Mongon will second.
Any discussion?
Separate three.
For voting?
For discussion and voting purposes.
Okay. Any other discussion or separations? Mr. Mara, roll call on items one and two for Supply, Service, and Equipment?
Dineoff?
Yes.
Hartman?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mongon?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Resolutions one and two, pass.
Okay, any discussion on number three?
Yes, Mr. Vice President. Number three is a very important piece of the puzzle, uh, for our facilities plan for this district. Uh, we had a interview process of our ESCO candidates on the 3rd of February, and it was a process that was prolonged, and it was a very thorough process. The Buildings, Grounds, and Transportation Committee sat in on the interviews, along with the administration, and our bond council was present as well, since we are talking about a substantial amount of money that we need to bond going forward. The process, uh, was very detailed. Uh, we received, um, two excellent presentations by two quality, uh, ESCO firms. The first one was Johnson Controls. They had a magnificent, uh, program. They had a very, uh, technologically advanced, um, presentation, and, uh, they supported, uh, their RFP, which is a request for proposal, and also their bid, uh, with, uh, discussions and questions based upon our professionals in the district, and they did very well. Uh, the second company, uh, that we had, uh, the pleasure to, uh, to deal with and to interview was Honeywell. Uh, Honeywell did a fabulous job as well in, in their presentation, and, uh, they explained to us, uh, how would, that, how they would incorporate, uh, the ESIP plan within our district, and what parameters and what items they would incorporate into our buildings. Um, the process, uh, went, uh, very well. Uh, we interviewed both candidates very thoroughly. Our bond council helped us, um, document our decision, because these type of decisions have a tendency of, of being, uh, interpreted in, in, in a, uh, wrong manner sometimes. So we, we crossed our Ts and Di, eyes to make sure that we did everything that we had to do regarding our fiduciary responsibility regarding this 16 million plus dollar initiative. Uh, I felt very comfortable, uh, as Chairman of the Buildings and Grounds with the decision to choose Honeywell. Uh, they came back, I believe, with the best financial package, uh, for the district, and one item which was a clear-cut, uh, indicator on their abilities is that they will and will not submit any change orders whatsoever. A change order is something that was not forecasted or evaluated before time, and when you have a change order, change orders are usually about 20% of your entire project cost. So in essence, what they did was, they promised, and it's gonna be in writing, um, that they will not submit any change orders going forward, and that will save the district a considerable amount of money. So that was one of the main reasons why we felt that Honeywell was the better-suited, uh, ESCO for our process, and plus, they were able to concisely, uh, and address a good majority of our concerns that we had delineated and outlined what we wanted done in the buildings. So those two reasons were really the reasons or the crux of, of why we are supporting Honeywell in this initiative, and I'm asking, um, my fellow board members to support Honeywell. I think that they will be the best ESCO company for our process, and this is a huge investment, and, uh, they are suited, uh, with their professionals, and they have vast amounts of experience, and also, they've done projects of this size, uh, in other districts. So with that said, uh, I, I'm asking, um, for this board to, to, to ratify, uh, Honeywell as our ESCO provider. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. I'd just like to add one thing. If anybody doesn't know, Mr. Dunn is employed in, uh, building management in his personal career, so we have, uh, pretty much expert representation on our Buildings and Grounds Committee, and, uh, thank you for your hard work. Okay, Mr. Mara, uh, roll call for item number three.
Dineoff?
Yes.
Hartman?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Epstein.
Mongon?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Resolution number three passes.
Okay, Transportation, items number one and number two, have a motion, please?
Dineoff will move Transportation.
Mr. Dineoff, in a second?
Hartman will second.
Ms. Hartman, any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Mara?
Hartman?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mongon?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Dineoff?
Yes.
Resolutions one and two, pass.
Okay, Miscellaneous, items one through six. Need a motion, please?
Dunn will move miscellaneous.
Uh, I apologize, I missed one, not, yeah, number seven, one through seven, I apologize for that.
Dunn will move miscellaneous, items one through seven.
And a second, please?
I'll second. Tag. I'm sorry.
I don't know who said it. Okay. Any discussion? Mr. Mara, please?
De Prima?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mongon?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Dineoff?
Yes.
Hartman?
Yes.
Resolutions one through seven, pass.
Okay, Board Secretary and Board Business, um, number one, as revised by Mr. Mara earlier tonight, and Mr. Sididino pretty much spoke about everything, so we need a motion, please?
I'll move it.
Ms. Foster? In a second?
Hartman will second.
Ms. Hartman, any discussion? Mr. Mara?
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mongon?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Dineoff?
Yes.
Hartman?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Resolution one passes.
Wow, okay, uh, hearing of the residents on any school district issue, anybody? Mr. O'Neil?
Uh, hello, I just want to applaud the board for something that didn't get discussed under miscellaneous, number four, um, denouncing and objecting to the expansion of the Activa, uh, school. For those of you who don't know about it, this is a charter school, a public charter school in East Brunswick, that takes students from all over the county, and every time that they take a student from Olbridge, it costs Olbridge taxpayers additional money. Um, it's complicated how the math works out to some extent, I don't think I have enough time to explain it, but it's more money coming from taxpayers and less money going into education for your students, um, and it's part of the beginning of a disturbing trend towards privatization in, uh, public schools. So I applaud the board for stepping up and, uh, denouncing this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. Anybody else, hearing of the residents, any school district issue? Wow. Okay, colleagues, any old business?
I have a, of course, old business, a little bit of a public service announcement. I think I made this announcement last year, for anyone that doesn't know or is in need of help preparing their taxes. The AARP Association, um, prepares taxes free of charge in the senior center Mondays and Thursdays from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM by appointment, and, um, you don't have to be a senior citizen to have your taxes prepared for you, but, um, there are a few exceptions. You can't be in the top 1% of the wealth of the country to get them done and have the complicated return, but for most instances, you know, um, we, we prepare the returns, and it is a very good service, so you can spread the word if you know anyone that could use help with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mongon. Any, any other old business?
Yes, I just have a meeting notice on Thursday. We have the first, um, Public Relations Committee meeting scheduled for Thursday, March 10th, at 7:00 PM in the Administration Conference Room, so all are welcome, community members, parents, faculty and staff, and students, especially students. Um, and it should be a fun and interesting discussion. It would be nice to have diverse perspectives, so, um, I hope to see you there. It's Thursday, March 10th at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
You know, as I said earlier, most of the committee meetings are open to the public cause, you know, we value everybody's input, and they're really, uh, enjoyable evenings. You get a lot out of them, so please watch the, the website or channel 118 or 24, just to see when they are, and, uh, I'm sure you'll enjoy it. Excuse me, anybody else? New business?[1624.86]